Are we good? All right, Andrew, thank you. Okay, and Kevin, you got that right, we're reconvening at 7:24. Okay, perfect. All right, good evening. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is April the 22nd, and it is, sorry, now 7:25 PM. Again, apologies, it seems like we're making a habit of running late for our council meetings, so I am sorry about that. Meeting is called to order. Let the record show all the council members are present. And tonight, I am going to lead us in prayer, so if you will pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with hearts of full gratitude and humility as we seek your guidance in the work we do for our community. Lord, we lift up our first responders, our police officers, firefighters, and all who serve on the front lines to protect and care for us. Bless them with strength, courage, and wisdom. Shield them from harm and surround their families with peace. We also remember and honor our military men and women, both at home and abroad. Lord, we praise them for their bravery, sacrifice, and service, and we give you thanks. May they feel the support of a grateful nation, and may you bring them home safely. Tonight, Father, our hearts are especially heavy as we lift up your servant and our Commissioner Bobby Mitchell. In the face of unspeakable tragedy, we ask for your comfort that surpasses all understanding. We pray for her physical healing, for her emotional and spiritual strength. Surround her and her family with love and support in the days ahead, and may she continue to feel your presence beside her every step of the way. As we carry out the work of this council, Lord, help us to lead with compassion, wisdom, and unity. May every decision we make honor you and serve you and the people of our community. Thank you, Lord, for loving us. Thank you for forgiving us. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas. One state under God, one and indivisible. Okay, we have next on the agenda mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Counsel, does anybody have anything? No? Okay. I'm sure I had a list of things, and I can't remember right now what they are, so we will move on to the city manager and staff reports.
Mayor, we've got a couple of items. Mayor, we've got a couple of items. First, the Highland Village Art Festival will take place at the shops at Highland Village on Saturday, May the 3rd, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There will be displays from over 30 gallery quality artists, artist demonstrations, live music and entertainment, and interactive children's art activities. Also, the movie in the park series is the first three Fridays in May at Doubletree Ranch Park. Movies begin at dark, come early, and enjoy the food trucks and yard games before the movie. And while we do not have municipal election, the municipal complex is a Denton County polling location, which includes the LISD election. During early voting, Denton County voters can vote at any polling location. Early voting began today and will run through April 29th. On Election Day, May 3rd, Highland Village residents will vote at the municipal complex, and you can visit votedenton.gov for a sample ballot. And that's all I have.
Okay, so we have Experience Highland Village video?
We do.
Did you know in less than an hour you could relieve stress, tension, and have a great time right here in Highland Village? I'm at Beanlight Sauna, and I am excited to see what is in store here at this incredible place. You don't want to miss it. Shelley is one of the owners of Beanlight Sauna. What's one of your favorite things about owning this studio?
How people feel when they leave here. They come in stressed from their day, their activities, the rigor of life, and when you come in here, it's 40 minutes to an hour of relaxation, and they leave feeling amazing.
What types of services do you offer?
We have infrared sauna. We also offer medical-grade red light therapy.
Lori, you're one of the co-owners of Beanlight Sauna, and I absolutely love it here. Sometimes we experience a lot of factors from our environment. Our environment can produce a lot of toxins. What are the benefits of the saunas toward getting rid of those environmental factors?
It does help remove toxins through the deep sweat, and that's because it is heating you from within down to your core level. So the first 20 minutes, not a lot of sweating, but then you'll notice the sweat. So it's really great for any kind of toxins, environmental toxins. It does have great mental health benefits because of the reducing the stress, better sleep, which we all need. We've had so many members come in and say after one session, they slept so much better.
Lori, not all red light therapies are the same. I've seen all sorts of therapies that are online that you can just buy off the internet. What makes yours different?
So our panels are medical grade, and it is the full body. So from head to toe versus just a spot treatment that other facilities may have. So you can get in 15 minutes from top to bottom and leave feeling rejuvenated and renew your skin.
Love that. Well, speaking of love, what was it about Highland Village that you loved that caused you to want to place the studio here?
My other two co-owners and I have lived in this area for over 20 years each, and we love the Flower Mountain Highland Village area. We knew that this was a service that was missing, and so we just thought it was a great fit.
Is this only for individuals? What about adding some friends or maybe turning this into more of a social hour?
Definitely. We do have two social saunas that are for two people. We have couples who come in for a little day date or night date. We have mother-daughter groups. Some even come in and take conference calls from in there. Best friends, we have a group of best friends who come in weekly just to catch up.
Oh my goodness, I love that. Well, I am about to run a half marathon, and I need to recover. I think I heard you mention recovery too. Tell me about what that can do.
Absolutely. The sauna is great for muscle recovery, pain and inflammation, all the things. You can sit in there, you can do your stretches, you can do a few little yoga exercises just to stretch out your muscles, and it's great for the inflammation after a heavy load like that.
Okay, well, I want to take a tour. I'd love to see more.
Absolutely, let's do it.
Shelley, what should people know before they arrive at Beanlight Sauna?
We always tell everyone to come in comfortable, loose-fitting clothing, come hydrated, and bring some extra water with you.
Okay. Are we ready to go on the tour?
Let's do it.
I love this town.
The best part of the whole treatment.
I've spent time at Beanlight Sauna, and I feel completely rejuvenated and refreshed. You don't want to miss this experience right here in Highland Village.
Okay. Let's, okay, well, team-building, counsel.
I did forget one thing.
I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Hawkfest.
Oh, yes, do you want to?
Heritage Elementary is having their annual Hawkfest this Saturday. So anyone listening, watching, it's going to be bigger and better than last year. And if you went to McAuliffe's Chili Cook-Off, that was exciting for the city. This will be equally exciting, so this Saturday.
Two to six.
Yeah, two, six at Heritage.
Two, six at Heritage.
I'd like to add one other thing.
Okay.
The Highland Village Elementary farewell is May 3rd from 10:00 to 3:00 at Highland Village Elementary. They say just show up, bring memories, and...
And their ceremony will be at, there will be a ceremony at 10:30 that morning, so...
Good catch.
Yeah, yeah, and good. And council, they have, at Hawkfest, they have Gladiator wars. So get ready for all of you that are going to be there. We can meet gladiators and fight, so... Oh, didn't I just pray for unity? Yeah, sorry. Okay, forget the fight. Okay, we're going to move along to visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address city council tonight? All right, perfect. So I want, I'm going to read this. I will, what I'm supposed to read, I'll just come on up and, I'm assuming that's you, since I, since my neighbors are sitting behind you, and I know them.
I'm a non-familiar face.
Yeah, so introduce yourself, your name and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Jennifer Lane, and I live in Denton, Texas. And I'm here because I love and use Pilot Knolls Park, and here's my pass.
Ah, perfect.
And I'm 70 years old, and my husband is 75. And I love that when people are very surprised to hear that. I'm thrilled that people are surprised, but it is in fact the case. And I have done some organized cleanups at the park, and I truly love paddle surfing there. In fact, in 2020, when it was difficult to really exercise much in the usual ways, having already learned how to paddle surf, I went to Pilot Knolls, rented, and then decided, we finally decided to break down and buy our own boards. And so what I'm here for today is to ask you guys to please consider extending your senior price to outsiders as well as insiders of Highland Village so that maybe it's not the same price, but it's the same sort of relationship price. And then also, if you would be so kind as to consider your half-year price as well for those of us who are related closely to the park, visited, end up doing a fair amount of cleaning up when we're there, go on special trips to clean up, but also simply want to come in, put the boards in the water for an hour and a half, and then leave. So I very much appreciate that. I've been meaning to come for a while because it's just a bit, it's a bit high relatively to the residence price, and there's no senior accommodation at all at this point for non-residents, and there's also no half-year accommodation. So I'm here to ask you to consider doing that. And if you, I know you're not supposed to be allowed to ask me any questions, but if you do, I, if you have any, I can certainly give you more information about, I think I'm probably a rarity, just coming in there to paddle surf and so on. But I do love the park and would like to be able to afford to come from time to time.
Appreciate that. We love hearing that you love the park.
I do, I really do.
We appreciate you coming out, and yeah, and you're right, we're not supposed to, we can't comment, but...
Yeah, walking is not, no charge, because you can park over by the guard booth and then walk on in and do trails, but carrying the paddle boards is sort of an impossibility without being able to come in.
Perfect, okay. Well, and I don't, that's probably on a future agenda item to take up.
Thank you, maybe I should just follow up with an email or something?
Well, that would be great.
Thank you, yeah, I'll do that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Have a great night.
You too. Okay, so consent agenda. Counsel, all items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda item. Counsel, does anyone wish to move anything from action? Nope, to consent?
I'd like to move item 13 and 14 from action to consent.
Okay, council, does everybody, is everybody good with that? Do you want to discuss anything? Mr. Fiester, you're, are you, are you good with that?
I'm content, yeah.
You're content? Perfect. Everybody? All right, so we are going to move items number 13 and number 14 to consent. So I will read those now. Number 10, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on April 8th, 2025. 11, consider ordinance 2025-1325, adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. This is second final read. Number 13, consider resolution 2025-3184, authorizing a contract with 512 Painting and Remodeling LLC for the Lake Vista Ground Storage Tank Repainting Project. Number 14, consider ordinance 2025-1324, amending the city code of ordinances, Chapter 2, by adding Section 2.02.003, termination of campaign treasurer appointment relating to an inactive candidate or political committee. And this will be the first of two reads. Counsel, what, do I have a motion? Oh, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve consent, agenda items 10 and 11, as well as action agenda items 13 and 14.
Perfect. Counsel, we have a motion?
All second.
Thank you. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side? Okay, Carrie 70?
Kevin.
Kevin. Thank you. Okay, so then, action and closed session, we did meet in closed session. We recessed closed session at 7:24, and we will go back into closed session once this meeting is over. And then, so, wow, late, late work session. I'm sorry. Are you looking at me like I forgot something?
No.
Are you sure? Because I could have forgot something the way this thing is going tonight. Anybody have any status reports on current projects or discussions of future agenda items? I'm sorry, what? Are you telling me?
Use your line.
Rhonda? Are you, are you, okay, thank you.
Can I go?
You can go.
I would like to request for a future agenda item at the first meeting of every month that we get a DCTA summary of the meeting the month before. The 4B had a presentation last week, and this CEO and the vice president had conflicting reports. So I think it'd be great to know more about our residents, know about DCTA, and we can also pose questions to get answers, because we've been asking the same questions, at least I've asked the same question four times, I still can't get an answer. So I like that. I'd also like to put on future agenda a robust tree ordinance. We have a few parcels of land left with trees and all, and right now, we really have no consequences for chopping down trees. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I think, I think I would like to put on a future agenda, and I don't know that, maybe after budget, but just a report from the departments on the budget items that were passed, that, you know, approved, and where they stand, just a, kind of an update from each, each department. And I don't want them all at one time, that's not what I'm saying, just maybe one department a month or something like that so that we get kind of caught up on, on where we are.
Well, now that we're doing that, for the rest of the council, I'd requested, one that I'd requested last summer, which is an update on Pilot Knoll, top to bottom, all the projects, every individual project, including sewer, power, electric, spend to date and progress to date, specifically on Pilot Knoll. And Paul said he's going to try to get that in the very near future.
Okay. Anybody else?
Along with your department updates.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so we are going to turn back into closed session under section 551.074, personnel, deliberate employment evaluation of city manager and city secretary, and it is now 7:42.